America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, the invocation tonight will be given by the Reverend Marshall Jolly of the Grace Episcopal Church of Morganton, and to my understanding, this is a prerecorded invocation.
Greeting city council members from the Grace Church labyrinth, let us pray. Look with pity, O most holy God, upon the people in this land who live with injustice, terror, disease, and death as their constant companions. Have mercy upon us. Help us to eliminate our cruelty to these, our neighbors, strengthen those who spend their lives establishing equal protection of the law and equal opportunities for all, and grant that every one of us may enjoy a fair portion of the riches of this land. Amen.
For those of you joining us from home, our mayor was unable to join us tonight due to an unexpected situation. Mayor Pro Tem Wendy Cato is joining us tonight remotely. In order to make the logistics of our meeting work with Mayor Pro Tem Wendy Cato joining remotely, we will have a roll call of the council members participating tonight. To my far right, we have Councilman Chris Jernigan.
Here.
We have City Attorney Louis Vina, City Manager Sally Sandy, Councilman Butch McSwain, myself, Councilman Chris Hawkins, and our recording secretary tonight, Kelly Russell. I'm so sorry.
Enjoy.
And joining us remotely, oh, I'm sorry.
Enjoy.
And Joy is joining us over there, signing for us tonight. Thank you. And joining us remotely, as I mentioned, is Mayor Pro Tem Wendy Cato.
She needs to affirm that she can hear.
Wendy, can you hear what is going on?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Our first item on our agenda tonight is consideration of a resolution honoring a retiring city employee. This is John Douglas McLean, who retired from the city of Morganton on July 1, 2020, with 15 years, two months service. He retired from the Water Resources Department as water treatment plant operator, and I'm going to read the resolution here with you. Resolution honoring John Douglas McLean. Whereas John Douglas McLean was employed by the city of Morganton as water treatment plant operator in the Water Resources Department on May 2, 2005, and whereas John Douglas McLean has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the Water Resources Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of the city of Morganton for 15 years, two months. And whereas John Douglas McLean retired from the city of Morganton as water treatment plant operator in the Water Resources Department on July 1, 2020, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of John Douglas McLean and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor presents this resolution to John Douglas McLean, adopted this third day of August, 2020, Mayor Ronnie Thompson. And tonight, I think we have, Councilman Jernigan will present the resolution. Mr. McLean?
I don't think.
Is he not here?
I don't think he made it. So we will present that at a later time.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution honoring retired John Douglas McLean.
I will second. Kelly, will you do the roll call for us, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Cato, can you hear me?
Yes.
Have you heard all of the details of that item?
Yes.
What is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in attendance, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Carrie. Next on our agenda is a presentation of service pins. The Personnel Committee and city staff have decided to recognize long-term employees for years of service at a council meeting. Due to time constraints, we believe it would be impossible to recognize all employees. However, those employees that have been with the city for 20, 25, or 30 years and above should be recognized for their commitment and longevity to this organization. Tonight, we will announce and present service pins to the following recipients. James Coward, Public Safety Sergeant II, 20 years. Israel Gibson, Public Safety Fire Captain, 20 years. Josiah Brown, Public Safety Lieutenant II, 20 years. And I think we have one. Israel is with us tonight.
Yes.
If you'd like to come forward, Israel. Chris is going to present you with the service pin. James and Josiah aren't with us tonight, and we will present their pins to them at a later date.
Israel, on behalf of the mayor, the city council, and the citizens of Morganton, I'm proud to present you with this 20-year pin. We greatly appreciate your service being with our public safety is just unbelievable. Folks, I don't think really understand the things that you go through, the training, and putting your life on the line for us every day. We greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Let's get a picture right here.
One, two, three. Thank you, sir.
We also have two others, employees that we'd like to recognize. The following were announced by the mayor at the May 2020 city council meeting. Due to COVID-19, employees were unable to attend, and the council would like to present service pins to James Hildebrand, comma, maintenance worker, for 20 years, and Mike Croft, Development and Design Chief Building Inspector, 25 years. And James and Mike, I think Butch is going to present those pins. Great, we have both with us tonight.
Yes.
You're a fixture around the comma, and we do thank you very much on behalf of the mayor and the council, and as Chris said, the citizens of Morganton. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You also had a great picture on the front of the paper yesterday.
Yes.
And here.
Yep.
All right, now, three, one, two, three. Thank you. Twenty-five years of what you've been doing is a long time. That really is a thank you. Thank you very much for your service on behalf of the mayor and the council. We do appreciate all you have done, and I think you're very well-known around town to this.
Thank you.
And hands and hugging, but we won't. One, two, three. I move. Thank you.
I think a round of applause for all the service. Next, under our public advocacy, issues and strategies, we have three proclamations, if you'll bear with me tonight, that I will read for you. The first is celebrating the power of women voting, and this proclamation will be accepted tonight by Janie Foster, the Democratic Women of Burke County. Ms. Foster, if you'll come to the podium, please, and I'll read the proclamation, and we'll present that to you. Proclamation celebrating the power of women voting. Whereas the United States is commemorating the centennial of the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution, which guaranteed that the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex, and whereas the text that would become the Nineteenth Amendment in 1920 was first proposed in Congress in 1878, and whereas women such as Ida B. Wells and Susan B. Anthony struggled for the vote for almost a century, beginning in 1830, marching, rallying, and lobbying. Only with the Voting Rights Act of 1965 was it guaranteed for female citizens of the United States, no matter the color of their skin, to vote freely. And whereas the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment were the culmination of decades of struggle for the rights of women across the United States, and many elected officials, both male and female, remember that they follow in the footsteps of the great suffragists. And whereas American women fought for and won the right through their voice and action, the women's suffrage movement forever changed America, expanding representative democracy and inspiring other popular movements for constitutional change and reform. And whereas there were 81.3 million women registered to vote in the United States as of 2018, comprising 53% of the electorate. And whereas women in unprecedented numbers are holding and seeking elected office throughout the United States. Now therefore, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the city of Morganton, recognize August as Women's Right to Vote Month as we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. I urge everyone to observe this month by learning about the Nineteenth Amendment and the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and their legacies. Adopted this third day of August, 2020, Mayor Ronnie Thompson.
And I know you wanted a group to be able to come up with you. That's fine.
I'd like Ms. Cecilia.
We need a motion.
But I think she wants some.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I would just like to say one or two minor things. Women endured over a century, beginning in 1830, marching, rallying, and lobbying, culminating in 1965, for the female citizens of the United States, no matter the color of their skin, to vote freely. We honor our brave revolutionists who fought for this cause. And as you've said, in 1971, only 3% of elected offices were held by women. Now, in 2019, 126 seats are held by women. So on November 3, as we cast our votes, we celebrate all these women and what they've done and all the suffragists in their journey for voting equality. Thank you.
Is separate motion to reach a resolution or all the whole?
It's a proclamation. So I don't think we have to have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My apology.
Bo Johnson, come back. On behalf of the mayor.
Sorry.
He's not here. And the council, we wish to present you with the proclamation. And if I can take a personal note, I was going through some personal papers, some family papers this weekend, and found a note that my grandfather, in 1918, took my grandmother and another neighbor lady from Lattimore down here outside of Shelby to Charlotte to walk in the rally that they were having for women's voting. So this is a personal, great thing here that I did not know until this weekend. So thank you both very much.
Thank you.
The next proclamation is a proclamation of thanks and appreciation to the town of Maiden. This proclamation is made and adopted by the city council of the city of Morganton at its stated meeting of August 3, 2020. Whereas on July 10, 2020, the Morganton area was subjected to intense storms with lightning, heavy downpours of rain, and very strong damaging winds. And whereas these storms brought down many trees, poles, et cetera, and caused widespread disruption of electric power throughout Morganton, with more than 3,000 city electric customers without power at one point. And whereas the skilled staff of the city's electric department, despite a maximum effort, required outside assistance to properly address all the damage and restore power to all customers. And whereas the town of Maiden is a public power community located in Catawba County, some 30 miles from Morganton. And whereas the Maiden employee provided invaluable assistance in addressing storm damage and restoring electric power in Morganton and devoted himself in a selfless manner to such work as if this was his own community. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Morganton that on behalf of the citizens and residents of Morganton, gracious appreciation and thanks is hereby expressed to the town of Maiden and to its electric department for the hard and valuable work of Maiden's crew in helping Morganton's electric department repair damage and restore power after the violent storms on July 10, 2020. And that a copy of this proclamation be presented to the town of Maiden and its electric department as evidence of our appreciation duly proclaimed this third day of August, 2020, Mayor Ronnie Thompson. We'd like to thank the town of Maiden for their help, and also, we have a proclamation of thanks and appreciation to the city of Newton. This proclamation is made and adopted by the city council of the city of Morganton at its stated meeting of August 3, 2020. Whereas on July 10, 2020, the Morganton area was subjected to intense storms with lightning, heavy downpours of rain, and very strong damaging winds. And whereas these storms brought down many trees, poles, et cetera, and caused widespread disruption of electric power throughout Morganton, with more than 3,000 city electric customers without power at one point. And whereas the skilled staff of the city's electric department, despite a maximum effort, required outside assistance to promptly address all the damage and restore power to all customers. And whereas the city of Newton is a public power community located in Catawba County, some 25 miles from Morganton. And whereas the Newton employees provided invaluable assistance in addressing storm damage and restoring electric power in Morganton and devoted themselves in a selfless manner to such work as if this were their own community. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Morganton that on behalf of the citizens and residents of Morganton, gracious appreciation and thanks is hereby expressed to the city of Newton and to its electric department for the hard and valuable work of Newton's crews in helping Morganton's electric department repair damage and restore power after the violent storms on July 10, 2020. And that a copy of this proclamation be presented to the city of Newton and its electric department as evidence of our appreciation duly proclaimed this third day of August, 2020, Mayor Ronnie Thompson. So certainly want to thank all those in our surrounding communities who came to help us that night.
Absolutely. The community assistance from the public power communities is invaluable, and as we sit right now with possible trouble in the east, everybody stands ready to go if they need our help there, so.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, a consideration of changing city council meeting date for September 2020. Due to the Labor Day holiday, city staff recommends that the city council meeting for September be changed from September 7, 2020 to September 14, 2020. I ask this in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, can you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Cato, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you heard all of the items, the details of the item discussed?
Yes.
What is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in attendance, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion is carried. Also, please note that city hall will be closed on Monday, September 7, 2020. Trash pickup will be delayed one day all week long. And I do have to apologize, I left off two things from the previous agenda, upcoming events. But before I do that, there was one I noticed that I did want to make mention. We were handed a resolution just moments before our meeting tonight, recognizing Sally Sandy's service as a member of the Board of Trustees of the North Carolina Local Governmental Employees Retirement System. And she served 13 years, and to my knowledge, she's the longest-serving member of that board, is what I think we were told.
It's a fairly long time. There may have been one other.
Well, one of the comments is that she made invaluable contributions to the work of the board through her service, and those of us who know her and work with her aren't surprised by that at all.
Thank you.
So I would like to recognize your work on that board, and thank you so much for your service in representing us on that board.
Thanks.
And if I may, I can speak from observing this over the years. Work on this board is not easy. It is very demanding. It involves going in person to Raleigh or very long telephone conferences, and the decisions that that board makes affect every employee of the city and every other municipal employee throughout the state. And Sally has devoted a tremendous amount of time and effort to working on that board, working with the state treasurer directly, and with the other people on that board. They'll miss her, I'm sure.
Are you saying that reviewing actuarial reports is not that exciting?
There's a lot of numbers, let's put it that way. The other thing that I left out, and again, I apologize, under upcoming events, the farmer's market will continue Saturdays at 8:00 a.m. to noon at 300 Beach Street, and Wednesdays from noon to 4:00 p.m., the mini-market at 111 North Green Street. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda.
Yes.
Sally, I'll turn that over to you.
So tonight, the consent agenda actually includes six items, and those are considered pretty routine, and we would ask that the council adopt those in one motion. I would like to just give the highlights for those of you viewing at home. So the first item is three sets of minutes. Minutes from the regular meeting held June 1, and then special meetings held on June 15 and June 25, 2020. Also, a resolution that approves our 2019 local water supply plan that is an annual requirement, and asks you to approve that plan. Also amending the application with Burke County for the COVID-19 emergency relief funds that were distributed from the federal government under the CARES Act to the state and now to counties, and then counties through to cities. Some recent legislation changed the amount of the dollars that would be coming to Burke County, which changes the amount available to municipalities for reimbursement for eligible services and expenses, and would like you to consider amending that tonight to allow us to apply for up to $469,725 in reimbursement. And we have until December in order to do that. Also ask you to award a contract to purchase a new bucket truck for the electric department. This was included in your budget. It is being purchased through a purchasing co-op, and it is to Altek Industries in the amount of $323,268.49. Also approving an amendment to a contract with Conterra Networks, which is for our internet connectivity. This would be for a five-year contract at $7,000 per month, which will allow us to increase our internet connectivity from 10 gigabytes to 20 gigabytes. And then finally, awarding a contract for design services for the Silver Creek Sewer Pump Station, and this is a project that we've been planning for several years in the budget. American Company Engineering Firm has won the contract to do design work for $266,000, and that is also included in this year's sewer budget.
What is the wish of council?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Do we need, the consent agenda will include changing the amount of COVID funds?
Yes, it does. It approves the amendment for the amount and the form that we have to send to Burke County.
Any other discussion or comments? Kelly, will you?
Mayor Pro Tem Cato, can you hear me?
Yes.
Have you heard all of the details of these items?
Yes.
What is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
All those in attendance, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion is carried. We'll now enter into our new business portion of our agenda tonight, and we have the first of two public hearings. We'll enter into a public hearing in consideration of a rezoning request to change the zoning for 32-plus acres of property located at 665 Kirksey Drive, Exclusive Industrial District EID to Low Impact District LID. And Phillip, tell us a little bit about that.
Councilman Hawkins, members of council, this is a request, as Councilman Hawkins stated, to rezone a property, or properties rather, located at 665 Kirksey Drive. And it is to propose to rezone those properties from Exclusive Industrial District to Low Impact District. The city's Planning and Zoning Commission met on June 18 and considered this. Some of the things they considered, and we'll look at the, on the map, is the location map. They looked at the land development plan, which, again, indicates this as exclusive industrial use. On the future land use map, let me get to that, to the north and west are proposed to be exclusive industrial and light industrial, while properties to the east and south are proposed to be residential mixed use and light industrial. The request as it stands does not comply with the Mission 2030 Conference of Land Use Plan. The Planning Commission therefore had to make a recommendation, or consider in their recommendation, that a finding had to be made, that there had to be, or there needed to be, a shift in what was forecasted when the Mission 2030 Plan was, when it was considered versus now, and how land use trends are marking now. And so what they recommended was unanimously eight to zero, was to recommend that city council rezone this property citing changes in need for residential housing in the community. There were two, there was a letter that was submitted by Vulcan Materials, basically saying that we own the adjacent property, and talking about, and I think that's included in your packet, talking about the nature of their business, and they are a materials or a quarry, and so there are certain activities that happen in a quarry adjacent to, that may or may not be compatible, adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And then we also received a letter from the property owner, who is here, and I'll let him speak, but he did submit a letter, I can read that, and then I think he does want to speak to the issue as well. Would you like me to read the letter?
Yes, if you would, please.
Okay, and it's dated July 24, 2020. Dear Mr. Philip Lookadoo, it has come to my attention through letters that my family's land at 665 Kirksey Drive has been submitted for rezoning by Scott Blake. This is the second time this has been submitted by Scott Blake. Scott Blake does not own this land, therefore, my family and I do not want the rezoning of the request of the 32 acres at 665 Kirksey Drive. Please remove this request and any other requests from Scott Blake concerning this property. REID number 61725158 and 37877 from the Morganton City Council meeting on August 3, 2020. Sincerely, Rod Orders. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Phillip. Do we have anyone in attendance who would like to come up and speak to this?
If I may.
Okay, please approach the podium and give your name and your address.
City Council, I'm Rod Orders, and my family owns the property located at 665 Kirksey Drive, Morganton, North Carolina. Neither I nor my other family members were consulted about the rezoning until June and July. We are not requesting a change in the rezoning and oppose the rezoning, and we're pleased by Scott Blake, and without our permission, and we ask that you deny the rezoning request. We thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Orders. Anyone else like to come and speak to this rezoning request? Anyone? If not, we'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of council?
Mr. Councilman Hawkins, may I address one thing briefly?
Yes, please.
As city attorney, just to be clear, Mr. Blake is a, the applicant for the rezoning is a developer who wished to do some development on this property, and that's why he was the one who submitted the application. I believe it's also true that he previously had the property under contract, or some entity that he controlled had a contract on the property, but I believe that has lapsed. Is that correct, Mr. Orders? So it's not currently under contract. But just, I think it is important the board understands that it was perfectly legitimate for Mr. Blake to submit an application, just from a legal point of view, without getting into anything else about the fact that the owners object.
Okay. So Mr. Blake does not own the property?
No.
He does not.
Okay.
Nor does he have it presently under contract to acquire it.
Phillip, I question, did the planning and zoning group know this at the time of their vote?
Excuse me. Yes, sir, and one of the questions is, how can that happen? And that is allowed within state law. A person who owns property within the jurisdiction of the ordinance can petition to rezone another property within that same jurisdiction. The state law requires that essentially, and that is effective, I will say, until January of 2021, well, let me back up, it has been postponed due to the coronavirus, but they essentially can do that now, and then what happens is, when we get that request, then we are required to notify the property owner as well as the adjacent property owners. And we typically notify everyone within 200 feet. And we typically notify everyone within 200 feet.
But if I may, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as far as I know, and it certainly wasn't presented in evidence to them, was not aware that the owners, that the Orders family opposed the rezoning. They just... They knew Mr. Blake didn't own it, but they were not aware. In fact, no one testified against the rezoning in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were not aware of this.
The July 24 letter was after the Planning and Zoning meeting.
So we don't have any idea if they were presented with this information, if that would have affected their vote at all, or their recommendation, do we?
No.
No idea.
I get no motion.
What is the wish of council?
There'd be no motion.
Like a motion.
Okay.
Is that...
Do we tell Wendy? How do we?
Well, yes, you do have to ask Councilwoman Cato whether she wishes to... Does she wish to make a motion?
Councilwoman Cato, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you heard all of the details of this item?
Yes.
Do you wish to make a motion?
Or have any questions?
Or have any questions about this?
It just doesn't make sense to me to rezone, even though it would be appropriate for a neighborhood investment. But if the owners do not want it rezoned, I can't see how an investor can go through with his project. It's a question mark for me.
I agree. I agree as well. Do we need to do anything further, other than just not make a motion?
I don't think we do. It does, which means effectively you've denied it because you didn't take action.
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Phillip. We have another public hearing. Public hearing in consideration of a rezoning request to change the zoning for .88 acres of property located at 107 Old Jamestown Road from Exclusive Industrial District EID to High Impact District HID. Phillip?
Councilman Hawkins, other members of council. What you see on the map that was included, the location map, is the property located at 107 Old Jamestown Road. The property is currently... Again, currently zoned EID, and the proposal is to rezone that property to HID. It came to our attention through an application for a business to locate there. And it is a business that would be permitted in the HID. And of course, no retail or commercial business is allowed within the EID. So as staff looked at it, looked... Did our normal research through these types of issues. We looked at the Mission 2030 Plan, found that the recommendation was for the property to be a general business or commercial, which equates to essentially HID. As staff is unable to initiate a rezoning request, we took the request to the Planning and Zoning Commission, presented it to them, and they then in turn initiated the rezoning request officially. And so it went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 9 of 2020. Again, as stated, they made a finding that it was in compliance with the Mission 2030 Plan and therefore recommended six zero to recommend to city council that the property be rezoned from EID to HID to be... And in furtherance, if you look at the current zoning, all of the properties to the east are currently zoned HID as well. And this would leave a balance of, I think, like four properties owned by the carbon plant to be... Continue to be EID. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Phillip. Do we have anyone who would like to speak or comment on this consideration of our zoning request? Yes, sir. You'll give your name and your address, please.
I'm Timothy Sutton. I address 107 Old Jamestown Road. I do the secretary treasure work for the facility. It's a two-story block structure. We're looking about renting the Downstars portion. And we was unaware of the zoning as it stands today. And whenever all this come to light. So I just come here merely today. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer what I can. I've been employed at the carbon plant for 32 years, so I've been around. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. If not, we'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of council? We have two quick motions.
Make motion to certify that this rezoning request is in compliance with the Mission 2030 Land Development Plan.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Kelly, will you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem, have you heard all the details of this item?
I have.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All those in attendance, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Okay, that motion is carried. We'll have another motion.
Yeah, I move to adopt an ordinance for a map amendment of 88 hundredths acres of property located at 107 Old Jamestown Road from Exclusive Industrial District to High Impact District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, will you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Cato, have you heard... Well, you've heard all the details. What is your vote on this portion?
Aye.
Thank you.
All those in attendance, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, and both motions are carried. Our next item of new business is consideration of award of CDBG CV CARES Act COVID-19 grant funds to nonprofits fiscal year 2019 funds. Sally, can you give us some details on that?
Absolutely. Back in June, we were notified that the federal government, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, was going to distribute monies to CDBG cities, which Morganton is one, to allow us to help in our community with expenses related to COVID-19. And we were told that we would receive $87,803. And so the city council amended our program and set up an opportunity for the staff to solicit grant requests from local nonprofits in order for us to be able to make grants to them to help with their expenses that have risen due to COVID issues. And we sent those out. We received five applications, and we are very excited tonight to have recipients. We hope that you are going to agree to make the distribution. We have had... Our CDBG committee has reviewed them and recommends awarding these dollars. I will tell you that this is pretty close to half of the money and that we will come back again and offer another opportunity for our local nonprofits to apply for dollars as the whole COVID-19 issue begins... Keeps extending, and we keep having more and more expenses relative to that. It's a really great thing that we get this opportunity, I think, because it's a way to help. The two programs... So we have ability for them to have applied for funding that would help with their direct expenses, things that occurred because of COVID-19 in their operations that otherwise they wouldn't have had to do. And then secondly, in order to be able to have a utility assistance program, we have an awful lot of utility customers who have been really struggling and unable to pay their bills. And so we were really excited to be able to place money with these agencies. And they have programs to seek out individuals and businesses that qualify for the money to help them to become current with their utility bills. So we're really grateful for that. The items before you in consideration would be for the meeting place would be $10,000 that would go to providing direct assistance to the shelter for their expenses relative to COVID-19. The House of Refuge for $5,000, and that would be to also help with direct expenses. For Burke United Christian Ministries, $5,000 to help with their expenses. And to look for them, it would be with the utility assistance program. And they would be helping qualifying customers pay their back utility bills. For Burke County United Way, $12,500, which would go to the utility assistance program that would be available to assist businesses that are struggling and that would qualify for these monies. They would be allowed to help a business up to $1,000 for those utility bills. For the individuals, they would be able to help up to $750. And then the Outreach Center, recommending $15,000. That would be $5,000 for the utility assistance program for individuals and $10,000 for expenses directly related to COVID.
Thank you, Sally. What is the wish of council?
Make motion to award CBDG CDBG CV CARES Act COVID-19 funds as specified for public service activities to local nonprofits as indicated for the purpose of assisting with COVID-19-related expenses.
Thank you. But you have a second?
Second.
I think it's great that we're able to help these five nonprofit organizations. And I think if my math's right, that still leaves about $40,303 remaining that we can use and...
Absolutely.
Help as well, so...
It was the wishes and hope of the CDBG Review Committee that we'd look toward mid to late September and issue out another call for grant applications and hopefully get some requests in so we can continue to help more people.
Right. Kelly, will you do the roll call and check with Mayor Pro Tem Cato?
Mayor Pro Tem Cato, did you hear the details of that one?
I did.
And how do you vote?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. And all those in attendance, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, and the motion is carried. And I think we're going to do some presentations at this time. Yeah, we've got big checks.
Big checks.
Literally, big checks.
I'll put the money available.
Chris, I think you want to start with us? I'm not sure which one that you have.
All right.
And we can say the money is available. The federal government has deposited the money in the account. It's a good thing.
Could I get a representative from the Burke United Christian Ministries to come forward? On behalf of the mayor and city council, we are pleased to be able to give you this, and we thank you for helping the citizens of Burke County, especially Morganton, right now. Oh, that's right.
This direction.
Face the microphone.
Which got two.
Which has got two.
Make sure you turn around so people can see this one.
I represent from the outreach. Somewhere there's a camera.
Oh, did I do it?
Nope. Turn around. Turn around. Never mind. You're good.
You're good. I got you. Absolutely. Thank you.
You're good. You're good.
I'm a handshake. On behalf of the city council and the mayor, we would like to present this money to you. And thank you for the service you provide.
Go to the podium so it can hear you.
I have two checks. Can I have someone from West County Highway? On behalf of the mayor and city council and the city board, and thank you for all of your work for community. I'd like to present this $1,500 to the county. Thank you so much. At the meeting place mission. And I know this is the fifth time we've said this, but it's still...
Absolutely.
We do thank you all of you and the meeting place nation for what you contribute. And we're very happy to thank you for everything that we do. Thank you so much.
That's awesome.
All right. Our next item of new business is consideration of items related to the historic Burke County Courthouse Square renovation project and the application to the Local Government Commission for a financing agreement. Sally, will you give us some details on that?
Absolutely. So this is a very exciting project, and it's one that we've been working on for quite some time. Actually, back in 1997, in our original downtown master plan, a revamping of the historic square was proposed and suggested in order to give it more life and make it more inviting. It was again recommended in our 2018 downtown master plan. And at that point, the citizens gave it very high priority and wanted it to be something that we sought to do in the next years. So the city council appointed a steering committee of about 30-plus people that worked for a period of months. We solicited bids from an architect. The city awarded a contract to Stimel &amp; Stitch out of Winston-Salem with help of the steering committee and interim review committee. And since that time, have been working on plans and proposals. Had quite a few public meetings regarding the project. We've met with the county. We've talked about the project. And you're seeing on your screen some of the renderings, which are pretty exciting and a pretty drastic change to the side of the courthouse where the old Jailhouse Gallery building has been. The project includes a permanent stage and opportunity for events to take place up there, lots of green space, some other smaller areas that would be inviting for you to come and sit and have lunch or just spend some time. Really cool stuff. In order to do this, however, this is considered a real project. So we are affecting real property, land. And we are constructing a building, if you will, with bathroom facilities and storage and the like on the property. Also, I want to add that we are changing the sidewalks and adding better accessibility for handicapped individuals, making it easier for people to get onto and off of the square, whether events are going on or whether they just want to go up and spend some time on the square. The other thing occurring in this is repair work to the existing rock wall that goes around three sides of the courthouse square. In order to do this, we sought bids, and we collected those bids on Thursday, July 23. And we received seven bids, which was very exciting. So we had seven contractors interested in the work. The bids range from $2.76 million to $3.52 million on the project. After looking at those and looking at this, our budget that you set for this year was based on construction estimates that were done quite some time ago. These bids, even the lowest one, which was $2.76 and which was submitted by Wilkie Construction Company, were over what we had budgeted. So city staff negotiated with Wilkie and got them to value engineer and to save about $197,000 in the cost of the project. Still, looking at the project and the design work, we're going to need, if we move forward with the full project and scope budget amendments, one in the general fund for $221,572, and one in the electric fund for $151,544. Along with the building, the bathroom, the sidewalks and that stuff, there's a lot going in the ground that people will not see, which is improved water and electric infrastructure. That's some really old infrastructure up there and working to replace that and to have that ready so that the center of town will be pretty and will be usable. And Christmas lights and everything else can work better than it does currently. And festivals and events will have adequate services also. So we are asking your permission for a couple of things. So we're asking that you would consider awarding a contract to Wilkie in the amount of $2,718... I'm sorry, $2,718,416. And that includes all of the work, except for the work that the water department will be doing, which is over and above that, which is for about $49,000.
Thank you, Sally. What is the wish of council?
I'm pleased to make a motion to award a construction contract contingent upon LGC approval of financing in the amount of two million seven hundred eighteen thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars to Wilkie Construction Company.
Thank you, Chris. We'll have a second.
Second.
Chris.
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that one is carried. We have another motion on the table.
I will move to approve budget amendments in the amount of two hundred and twenty one thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars in the general fund and a hundred and fifty one thousand five hundred and forty four in the electric fund.
Thank you, Butch. We'll have a second.
Second.
Chris.
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? That motion is carried.
I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with LGC for approval of a financing agreement authorized by North Carolina General Statute one six zero A dash two zero.
Thank you, Chris. We'll have a second.
I'll second.
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that motion is carried as well, and we have one more.
I'd make the motion to call for a special meeting for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the financing of the historic Burke County Courthouse Square renovations to be held Thursday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six P M. here in the council chambers at City Hall.
Thank you, Butch. We'll have a second.
Second.
Chris?
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that motion is carried. We have another motion on the table.
I will move to approve budget amendments in the amount of two hundred and twenty one thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars in the general fund and a hundred and fifty one thousand five hundred and forty four in the electric fund.
Thank you, Butch. We'll have a second.
Second.
Chris?
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? That motion is carried.
I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with LGC for approval of a financing agreement authorized by North Carolina General Statute one six zero A dash two zero.
Thank you, Chris. We'll have a second.
I'll second.
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that motion is carried as well, and we have one more.
I'd make the motion to call for a special meeting for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the financing of the historic Burke County Courthouse Square renovations to be held Thursday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six P M. here in the council chambers at City Hall.
Thank you, Butch. We'll have a second.
Second.
Chris?
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that motion is carried as well. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, consideration of award of contract for design services for Bethel Park Ecological and Stormwater Improvements Project. Sally?
This item is something else that we have talked about for several years and something that was included in our two thousand and eighteen Comprehensive Recreation Master Plan. So Bethel Park was completed in nineteen seventy eight. It's about fifteen acres. And over the last years, especially during the last ten years and the last five years, as weather, stormwater and the like has caused some severe changes in that park and is really making it very difficult for our passive park areas and our other park areas to get used. Anytime it rains, it floods. And in our master plan, we had some really awesome proposals for us to look at a redo of that park in order, and that was also set as a pretty high priority in the Recreation Master Plan by the public. In order to do that with the creek and and the waters, we need to do an engineering study and we need to understand what's going on there and we need to look at some of the upstream issues and really understand what can happen there because we don't want to invest a lot of money in trying to redo a park and then have the same kind of situation happening. So in order to do this, we have included some money in this year's budget and we are asking to contract with AECOM, which is one of our own call engineering firms. And they would go through four different tasks with with this, which would consider their assessment, water set assessments. They look at some modeling, they look at some concept design and and give us some of that to consider. And then hopefully with the concept, if we can agree on one, they would then help us apply to Clean Water Management Trust Fund and maybe Land and Water Conservation Fund and some of those sources for money in order to do the project. Probably looking at about a six month process to get ready to have a application to go to ask for grant dollars for this. Would ask that you consider doing that. The amount that they have proposed is sixty four thousand six hundred and ten dollars and that is included in our budget this year.
Thank you, Sally. What is the wish of council?
I am pleased to make the motion to award a contract for sixty four thousand six hundred and ten dollars to AECOM for design services for Bethel Park Ecological and Stormwater Improvement Project.
Thank you. We'll have a second.
And I am pleased to second.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, this is a part-
We're making everybody happy tonight.
Yeah. This is a park that gets a lot of use and and those proposals that were in the master plan, we're very excited.
Awesome.
And this is an important first step.
We've tried different things out there since, that I've been involved since eighty nineteen eighty five, that I hope we can get some better use out of the area.
Absolutely. Kelly?
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear the details of that item?
I did, and I apologize if you hear my grandchildren. I am happy with the project.
So your vote is?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any any other discussion? All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that motion is carried. Lot of good stuff.
Joy, are you okay going forward? I'm guessing these are going to be pretty fast. I'm guessing fifteen minutes max. Right about there. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. The next item is consideration of an award of contract for consulting services for an information technology feasibility study. And Sally, I think you have some more information on that for us as well.
I do. So so this afternoon, the city council had a work session with our Compass Cable consultant, who has been working with us for the past four years, a little over four years, about the business model for Compass and stressing the importance of having an internet system and a broadband system that that sets us apart from other communities. And I think after the last few months and the pandemic and working at home and studying at home and meeting at home and everything else at home and all the rest of it, we know how important broadband and and internet technology is. So we have received a proposal from Tom Johnson, who is here tonight, who we have a longstanding relationship with, and he is currently working as a consultant with the Sanford-Holzhouser Economic Development Group, another group which we also have a longtime relationship with. And Tom has recently done a technology study to seek out the possibility and feasibility for us to go after and recruit information technology companies in the city of Morganton. And the Compass infrastructure really allows us, we think, to be able to do this. Tom has recently done this for a community in eastern Tennessee, which made him think about us, and he really feels like we have a great opportunity with this. And the proposal before you tonight is twenty seven five hundred dollars, and that would be for the contract for the study and any expenses related to it and ultimately would lead us, we hope, to a positive look at the feasibility and then give us next steps and be able to go out and actually try to recruit businesses that could locate in Morganton in the information technology field. You have anything else to add?
I'll try to answer any questions. I'll try to answer any questions.
It is. And 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 you have a copy of the proposal and and we, the staff really feels like this is something that the timing is right on this for us, especially with the information we learned this afternoon about Compass and our capabilities. Since we didn't know about this at the time we put the budget together, this will require a budget amendment. And the one included in your packet shows that we would pay for this out of the Compass Cable Fund, but really it needs to come out of the general fund. We usually do our economic development study and recruitment in the general fund, and so I would recommend that we look at our budget amendment if we would like to move forward, coming out of the special appropriations line item in the city council's budget and using appropriated fund balance for that. That does not put our fund balance in jeopardy, and and this is how we would normally do something like this.
Thank you, Sally. What is the wish of council?
Make a motion to award a contract to Sanford-Holzhouser LLC for consulting service in the amount not to exceed twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars for an information technology feasibility study.
Thank you, Chris. We'll have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch.
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear the details of that item?
Yes.
What is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that motion is carried. We have one more motion on this item.
I would make the motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars. Do we need to improve, include the special appropriations line item?
I think you can just say from the general fund.
From the general fund, then.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a second.
Second.
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear that motion?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in attendance in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And that one is carried as well. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here. Thank you. Our next item is consideration of approving an interlocal agreement concerning construction and operation of a water tank for the Burke Business Park. And I'm going to go to city attorney Louis Vina for details on this.
Thank you, Councilman Hawkins, members of the council. This is yet another project that we are hopefully bringing to fruition that is something that has been around a long time. As you know, the Burke Business Park, the industrial park out off Cathy Road, is owned is was established many years ago, is owned by BDI, which of course itself is a joint effort of the county, the city, and the towns of Valdez, Drexel, and Rutherford College. Regrettably, it was determined recently, in the last few years, that a major hindrance to attracting any industry to that land, it was the questionable ability to provide fire protection services to any large structure there. And to address that, it was determined it was necessary to create an elevated storage tank with appropriate pump and other infrastructure, a half million gallon elevated tank. The city, of course, provides the water service there, so and would presumably continue to do so. To achieve this, this is not an inexpensive project. In fact, the estimated cost of the project is two point three million dollars. BDI assisted the county in obtaining a state grant of one point nine million to pay most of the cost of this, and the city and the county are contributing the necessary local match to make up the difference there. The city's contribution toward that match is the seventy five thousand dollars, which we have already contracted to pay to West Consultants for the design of the project and for construction management services. Because there's so many different government bodies involved here, there's a need to amend the interlocal agreement that already exists among the various governments and BDI. And this new interlocal agreement will spell out how this project is going to be handled, which is basically that the county will, which is responsible solely for the grant, will be responsible for the contracting with the chosen contractor. So the city will not be a party to that contract. However, as upon completion of the project, the tank, the pumps, and the pipes will all become part of the city's water system. In fact, part of the project is installing the booster pump on the city's Hennessy Street elevated tank in Glen Alpine, because that's where the water line, water will come from to go into this tank. And upon completion also, BDI will transfer a tract of about an acre and a half around this tank to the city, so that we will become the owners of that, subject to the condition that if it ever ceases to be used as a water tank, then it will be reverted back to the to BDI. The county has already approved this interlocal agreement at a meeting in July. The other three municipalities will also, and I'm not sure if any of them have already approved it, they obviously will do so if they haven't already. So the city needs to approve it as well to move this long expected project forward.
Thank you, Louis. What is the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve and accept the interlocal agreement concerning construction and operation of a water tank for the Burke Business Park and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute this and any related necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. We'll have a second.
I'll second it.
And if I'm, I should have added, by the way, to be clear, once this is constructed, the city is responsible and out of our own budget solely for the maintenance of this tank, which is not cheap, because as you know, with these water tanks, they have to be inspected, they have to be repainted from time to time and so forth.
Thank you, Louis. Kelly?
Mayor Pro Temcado, did you hear the details of this item?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any any other discussion? All those in attendance in favor of the motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Repose? And the motion is carried. Our next item of business is consideration of pay range adjustments and updates. Sally?
So another opportunity that COVID nineteen has presented is an opportunity for the city to take a look at comma Main Street and the Community House, what we're going to call our trio of cultural and creative departments in the city. Not that everyone else isn't creative from time to time, but in looking at those organizations and looking at the way that they already operate and how they work very much, most of the time in partnership, and looking at an economic development opportunity for the city to grow our cultural and creative arts and to work toward that as truly a proactive approach to look for that to be a part of our economic development drivers. We are proposing that we restructure, that we create the Cultural and Creative Development Department, isn't that a name? And that we have reporting and as a part of that department, the Main Street office and the Main Street functions, comma, and the Community House. And in doing so, in looking at moving boxes on the organizational chart around and in setting up that organization, in in looking at that, we have four payroll pay allocations that would be setting up the the pay ranges, which is something that is a council responsibility that we would ask that you consider. And those would be for the Cultural and Creative Development Director, the Main Street Manager, the comma Events Manager, and then the Office Assistants for the Cultural, the Office Assistant for the Cultural Development Department. We'll tell you that as we have looked at this, and we have shared this with the Personnel Committee and the Finance Committee, and they have given their approval, we would be doing this with our current staff, and we would be placing Sharon Jablonsky as the director over this department, and then we would be rearranging those existing employees that we have. we would be rearranging those existing employees that we have. We'll also point out to you that we currently have a couple of vacancies within those departments. Given the COVID situation and not knowing where we're going, would not propose to fill those currently. Would give us an opportunity to do a little bit of master planning and set up a little bit of time to study and come up with a master plan for how we would proactively go after economic development related to the arts and culture. We will not add any new positions, we will not add to the head count, and there will be no budgetary changes required to do any of this.
Thank you, Sally. Counsel, what is your wish?
Make a motion to approve attached pay ranges and job classification title changes dated August 3, 2020.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Cato, did you hear the details of that item?
I did.
And what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And it's carried. And our next item of business is consideration of abolition of Firefighters Supplemental Retirement System Board. Louis, you got some information on that for us?
Yes, thank you. I'll try to keep this as simple as I can. There's a long history here that dates back to 1963, but basically the city has had two separate things, each with a separate board. The Firefighters Supplemental Retirement System and the Firefighters Relief Fund. They weren't exactly for the same purpose, but there was a great deal of overlap, and each had its own board appointed by the council. Unfortunately, over the years and because of restrictions that were imposed by either, by state law or by the State Firefighters Association, which regulates these boards, we accumulated a great deal of money in this supplemental retirement system that could not legally be used. In fact, over $400,000, yet under our arrangements, the annual payout to beneficiaries was, of whom we had 37 currently, was only $73 a year. And, which is a ridiculous situation, to be perfectly honest. Changes in the law allow us basically to combine these two boards and these two functions into one board. The supplemental retirement system, as you might, as its name indicates, is to provide a small or a modest annual supplement to retired firefighters. The relief fund is to provide basically emergency assistance to employees or retirees in need of medical expenses or whatever. Unfortunately, ours was set up under a local bill, so to make any change, we had to get legislation to change that. Thanks to efforts of Senator Daniel and Representative Blackwell, we were able to do that. The General Assembly passed that this year. And so now we're in position to simply do away with the supplemental retirement system board and combine all the funds into the Fireman's Relief Fund, which will have a separate account for the retirement funds from the relief funds, but all be governed by that relief fund board. And so you need to take some actions to carry out the, what the legislature has now allowed us to do, dissolving that retirement system board, transferring all the funds into, from the retirement system into the relief fund, and directing the relief fund board to, going forward, to administer that. I would, before you take it up, I would like to thank Captain Gibson especially, but also Major Lander and Chief Lautermilke and from Public Safety for the work they put into this, and Jesse Paris from Finance. This was a complicated business and it's taken quite a long time to get here, so we're glad to be able to get to this point.
And we weren't the only one. This-
That's true.
-was in other communities too at the time these were set up.
It's one of those things seemed like a good idea in 1963.
Thank you, Louis. What is the wish of council?
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution transferring all funds in the Firefighters Supplemental Retirement Fund into the Firefighters Relief Fund, dissolving and disbanding the FSRs Board, abolishing the FSRs, and directing the FRF Board to henceforth administer the funds previously in the FSRs in accordance with state law and the SFA guidelines.
Thank you, Butch. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chris, you got off easy on that one.
My dear.
Mayor Pro Tem Cato, did you hear all of the details?
All of them, I did.
Did you understand them? That's the real question.
Basically, yes, yes.
What is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion is carried. The last item on our agenda is consideration of appointments to boards and commissions. This is an appointment to the Human Relations Commission, and it is a mayoral appointment. And we will defer this appointment to our next month's meeting since Mayor Thompson is unable to be with us tonight. That being said, is there any other business that's not?
Yes, I would like to, it seems like a long time ago now, but we haven't met, and I'd like to compliment the Rob Winkle, or in the Recreation Department, the July 4 fireworks. I don't know what everyone else has had related to them, but it was a big hit. And that was a gamble you guys took, and it turned out great. The crowds were phenomenal, the show was good, and we thank you again.
And if my memory serves, I think we did mention, we had a couple other folks who had some awards and recognitions.
So I have three things, and then we'll be done, Joy. So, and we've talked a lot about her tonight. So back in June, no, July, what is this month? This is August. It was in June. My gosh. So back in June, Sharon Jablonsky was given a national award, and she was awarded with the first ever Mary Means Leadership Award for the, from the National Main Street Program. And that is the first time they have given an award. It was, you were able to submit a nomination from 42 states that participate in that program. Sharon was the North Carolina nominee and was selected in the nation to win that award. And she's dedicated a lot of her life to downtown Morganton and to the Main Street Program, and we're very proud of that. Also, Ethan Smith, our PIO, and Michael Burley won an award with the NC 3C, which is the Public Information Officer Communications Group for the state of North Carolina. We won an award, those two got an award for their submission of the brochure for the Historic Morgan and Festival with the bicycle, with the playing card bicycle on it. Really proud of that. And then, what's the third thing? There was something else I was gonna say. Oh, pool. That's exactly what it was. You were talking about Rob. Thank you. Bald-headed man in the back. So as the summer is winding down in days, but perhaps not in heat, the city is facing the issue with lifeguards in the life of COVID-19 yet again. Our lifeguards are preparing to go back to school, and this year they have been ordered to, ordered, they have been asked and requested to social distance and quarantine themselves for 14 days prior to going back to school. So we are losing our lifeguards earlier in the season than we normally would. And so as of next Sunday, next Sunday will be our last day for the Collet Street Pool to be open. We'll say that it's been a different season, no swim lessons, but we have had folks using the pool. They've been very appreciative, and we're very proud that we got to offer that service. A lot of people around us did not. And we are now looking, as we go forward and hear more from the governor, what we will be able to do at the indoor pool and how we may transition some use of that as we go forward. So stay tuned, and we'll let you know.
So while we're bragging on Rod's programs in that we've been able to hold some baseball tournaments very safely, and they've been very successful from what I understand, and we appreciate that too. And I would think we should say that the Streeteries and the Parklets have gone over extremely well downtown and I think have tremendously helped our businesses to be open safely.
I would agree with that. I was in a meeting, and a manager whose son played in tournaments at our fields told me that they had played at several locations and that Morganton was the safest, the most well-done, most organized event, and how pleased they were to be able to get to do that here.
So much to be proud of and-
Absolutely.
Thank you to all that were mentioned. That's wonderful. Anything else? If we don't have any other business, we're adjourned.